But you timed it perfect. It was two seconds later. Council Wunarski is on, so he is ready to roll as well. Mr. Ray.
I don't have. No, because GNT has called first that and they're in emergency. Our phones still doing a separate. Oh, that's nice. Yeah, we don't have to compete.
I tried to get the county to do that when I first got here instead of spending twenty-six million dollars. It was cheaper to give you all cell phones and first that and it was more accurate because it DPS.
Oh, I agree.
But you know. I go three. Twenty-six million dollars and two million dollar maintenance agreement a year later.
You know, they give us a good discount.
Technology change every six months.
All right, well, we got everybody. Megan, you good back there? Right, we're gonna go ahead and call the speaker board. Everybody please rise. I.
Which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, call please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Vale.
Here.
Mr. Horton.
Here.
Mrs. Rennie.
Here.
Mrs. Shalman.
Here.
Mr. Scatella.
Yeah.
Mr. Wunarski.
Here.
And Chairman Shank.
Here. Now, we don't have anybody signed up, correct?
No, sir.
So that opens the floor up to anybody who would like to say a few words, step up the podium, state your name, municipality, and your time will start.
Dan Tellerico, Harvard Road, Steve Erie. The last time I addressed this board was over two months ago, and I made some comments about conflicts of interest with the election board. And while I stand by every word of that, I did, in the course of that, violate the rules here, and I'm here to apologize publicly to Mr. Shank, who I personally criticized several times and the entire board for the way I delivered my comments. That was wrong, and I'm here to publicly acknowledge that. I understand the need for civil discourse at these meetings, and I guarantee you I will do better in the future. And I just want to make a few comments about the budget and where we are financially as a county. Since I was here two months ago, I know that this last month, the county parted with one million dollars that we didn't budget for. And those things happen, and it's for a very worthy cause. Certainly, we need EMS coverage throughout the county. But from what my understanding, I don't have the numbers, and I'm sure we'll have more of a picture when we develop the next budget, that financially, the county is heading off cliff. And this administration seems to be spending money on a lot of things. It doesn't help to say, I told you so, or we told you so, but we did part with five million dollars for project resolve last December. And the county just does not have that kind of assets, because those emergencies, like the EMS thing come up, we shouldn't have done it. Saying that was wrong doesn't bring any money into the county, but I believe that that decision is going to affect this county for years to come. And I've been on boards before, and we're always reminded that you, as a member of the board, have a fiduciary responsibility to the people you serve, and this council has that responsibility. I think it's very important that you really keep this administration in check from now on in. Again, it would be nice if we had that five million dollars. Right now, we would be in a lot better shape. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to say a few words at this time? Anybody else want to say a few words at this time? Last call. Anybody else like to say a few words? Seeing none, we move on. Takes the comments and questions from Erie County Council.
Yeah, for the, for the.
Yeah, for the.
For the ordinance.
Forty-two, yes.
Well, you know, I do have some concerns if I may speak this. It seems to me like there's a number of things that just really haven't been addressed in this. And I'm wondering what's the rush to bring to a special meeting? I didn't see that it was necessary. There didn't seem to be any hurry, you know, a few weeks ago, and the questions that we had at the last meeting hadn't really been addressed. So far.
Okay.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
I too. Why is it such a rush to bring it forward in a special meeting today? Is it for savings? Is it looking for an employee? Could you give me a just reason? That I'm looking at, and I don't mean try, should probably look at Doug.
I'd be happy to take that, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Mr. Personnel Chairman.
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
I believe that this body determines whether there's a special meeting or not. And so I don't see the, for the administration, that question is for the administration as much as it is for this body. Because I didn't understand what we were having in person as well as since you. They want to call new meetings and not him. I think that deserves an answer.
Okay, I have no problem with that. The administration reached out to me with their concerns about these positions. And we had a nice long conversation, Doug and Anne and everything, and I felt it was worthy because it is a time factor, and I will ask Mr. Smith to comment on that.
Well, I have questions as well for that too, but if you've given Mr. Smith the floor, and I'm eager to hear that as well.
Thank you. So in regards to M.C. In regards to ordinance forty-two, which is principally deals with the procurement department reorganization, the time factor there was that the current director will be leaving us in July. This ordinance, of course, changes from a director to a manager. It does also put it under the finance department, but really, the more timely matter is that we don't want to have a new manager who is also posting the position, conducting interviews, and working with a vacancy within her office. So when we expect the current buyer to move over into the manager position, that second position will have to be posted. That's at least ten days, and then you would expect there to be at least another week for interviews and so forth. So that's three weeks. If we were to wait till June, that cuts it pretty close to an early July departure by our current director. So that was the reason we requested the special meeting for consideration of ordinance forty-two today. It's really the posting time involved. Now, none of the changes will occur until July, so there is no additional funding being spent. It simply allows us to post an updated position. So that's the other matter. We are changing the buying position, so we can't post the old description. We want to post the new one. In order to be able to post that new one, you have to pass it for us. So if we had waited until June, that would have really made it a difficult timetable for the new manager. So that is the reason why we asked that be considered today. In terms of the ordinance forty-three, there is some of the same argument. We're going to have a brand-new IT telecommunications position in theory, and in order to post that position, you have to pass it before we can post a brand-new position. The position is moving under IT in this particular ordinance from operations. This also gives the operations person who is taking up slack and duties over in that area of the county some additional pay, which we feel is warranted, and that they are taking on a significant number of new duties in place of those conducted by the previous telecommunications manager. There again, we're talking about posting time, being able to post the most up-to-date position, and that is the reason, really, and that is since realist request. So the directors leave in July twenty-third somewhere. When procurement, yes, the seventh. And you're using this because of posting. If he walked out today, we would not be able to function. Is that what you're telling us? I think it would be putting a lot of pressure on the manager. I mean, she would get by. Absolutely. And I'm always saying this because we've had this discussion before about rushing something down here, right? It could create a, put us in a position where we don't look simple, and that includes the administration. We look like a gang that doesn't shoot straight to the community, to the county, and that's what you try to avoid. And I understand calling the chairman because he's a chairman. But anytime the Jews have had issues, both issues where you don't think that there might be a weak fourth or fifth vote, you guys always update. Bring the end, and we discuss it. And then to bring this out and not even contact me as Personnel Chair, I get a little offended by that. I try to work with you guys, and I talked about the rush to judge. That's what bothers me, because then when we make the vote and it's wrong because it's something that was rushed, we look bad. We might look bad on a good vote, but it doesn't have to be that way. That's my only concern. But I do have an issue. This is going from A to B, or A to ten, correct? Yes. The figure of nineteen dollars in some hour, that's in what is it? I wrote my classes. Nineteen twenty-six. Is that not grade eleven? Not grade ten? Grade ten is eighteen seventeen minimum pay. And grade eleven is nineteen twenty-six. You got ten be listed as the nineteen dollar twenty-six cents. Should that not be eighteen? Grade ten?
You're saying the grade ten should be eighteen dollars as a base.
Let me see if I can bring up the.
Scale.
The scale.
Councilman Scatella, is that a copy that you have there that we could share with them?
Yes.
You want to see the copy he asked them?
Yeah. With the non-bargaining base scale? There's no data on this one.
That forty dollars, right?
Yeah, I didn't believe it is.
Do that calculation, nineteen twenty-six. Can I see that chart?
Jen's looking it up right now.
Jen, so that's, ask her to zoom in. And if I can just address Chairman Scatella about the way the information was presented. So originally, we sat down and explained everything, and I know that we asked for the special meeting, but nothing really changed other than the sense of urgency because we lost key employees. So my apologies for not bringing you into the loop there. I viewed it as like just an agenda item administrative, administration communication between, you know, our director administration and council. So that's what happened. But we'll remember next time to make sure we can be removed.
And I don't bring this up in pickguard.
It's okay.
We shouldn't have to go through back and forth where we're both found.
Right.
Look like we're pitted against each other because we're not.
Right.
It shouldn't be, this should be pretty wise, a smooth hassle.
Right. And originally, we were going to wait for two readings for all of this, but the sense of urgency here because we lost the key employee in operations puts us more dependent on, makes us more dependent on an existing vendor, which is actually going to cost more than it would if we don't hire someone, say, so that's.
No, luckily, we're unable to get around having to use an expensive vendor, so that part's. And that's where you're talking about saving money, correct? Yes, sir.
Vendor for what?
For the telephones.
Two million dollars, the Nortel phones that are expired, that system.
And while you're still looking at, I'm going to make a copy of the document Chairman Scatella had.
Yeah, I want to make sure he has a current one, too.
Yeah, I think this is.
That is, oh, sorry, Andre.
Yeah, I don't want to skirt over that.
Okay.
That because we, you know, we're having a conversation about that, but since you threw it out there, I want to make sure that everybody knows that it's a minimal too much of expenditure. It's all reaching the end of life. I'm sure we'll be having a lot of conversation about it going forward. It's with the counties. That Mr. Tellerico said, with our fiduciary responsibility, in that in all these matters, I think it'd be well to have said. You heard him through.
Just waiting for the response to that.
And if, ma'am.
You said time is right there.
I just still know, so the new manager is being hired from within, and is that, is that correct?
They'll be given the first shot with that.
Yes. And so that new manager will be doing the interviewing or what your team will be, county executive, or his representative, I.D.U.
Probably a custard, yes.
And what role will H.R. play in that? It was a very character that I've seen came down, come down in the last year. A year and a half. It's been kind of guided by H.R. and the administration, which is fine. That's the process that you all.
We don't generally expect that to be the case in this situation, Mr. Horton.
Yeah, but that has been the case.
Some instances for, certainly for cabinet-level positions, actually.
Yeah, because, because in the reason I'm asking, because if that is the case, then again, it goes back to why the sense of urgency. We leave my job for a special meeting. And I've sit here, what, not long ago, I think we had a point, not going to go down that route. But special meetings and executive sessions should be just that. It shouldn't be ketchup or oops, we slipped. And I get to gas leave, but if we're having to tend to hire someone internally, the clarity appears to be that then there's no reason we shouldn't have called a special meeting to do this.
You want to come?
So to answer your question on the eighteen seventeen, a ten does start at eighteen seventeen, but for the personnel code, we allow up to six percent above that, and so that's where that eighteen seventeen times one point oh six comes in to nineteen twenty-six an hour.
So.
Which starts them at the base pay for the next step up.
For the next step up.
Why would you put it at that when we don't even have some, when we have somebody I can see.
We just budget for worst-case scenario. That's all. I mean, we have to, I shouldn't say worst-case scenario, but if we got a high-level candidate, we decided to do that. We have that flexibility, so we didn't want to we want to budget for the worst-case scenario expense-wise, I guess, is what we're saying.
Right, which I mean, you could have.
We could have, but then you might have said, why didn't you put, you gave this person six percent, you didn't tell us, so we're being transparent.
Okay, that just seems a little strange, though, to me, that, you know, if you have a base level that you figure you're going to bring anybody in, and with you have no one at all for the position, and you're already, it just seems a little odd. I don't know why we would do that.
Well, Ann, the first example in this, this example itself is how we budget health insurance, where we always budget for a family policy, where we may hire somebody that's a single, so we're going to save money there. So it's worst-case scenario. What's, we want you to know, as Ann said, transparency. What's the worst this would be? What's the most this would cost? But in some instances, it may not be that way.
I think with health insurance, there's a, it's been that way for years, but this is new, so far as I know. Budgeting, you know, like a six percent increase over the base level, and you don't know who you're hiring. And another, another thing I wanted to mention while I'm thinking about it, the ordinances and the exhibits didn't change at all from when we received them last time, and I know that there were some supposed changes to some of the numbers involved, and I thought we were going to get some sort of updates. There's really not much in here in the way of rationale that's been written now. There's just a lot of questions about the numbers, and I guess if it was that important, why wasn't, why weren't we given correct figures or updated or questions answered and so forth? We're really coming to the table with no new information.
There, the, the final amount on the high-two changes and operational changes because of some payout that will take place in that budget, the numbers didn't end up changing greatly. But the numbers are pretty much what they were when we looked at them several weeks ago in terms of the rationale. The position changes and our request here today has not changed. Now, I wasn't at the meeting several weeks ago, and Attorney Tellerico brought up some concerns that had not brought up, been brought up by any council members. And so that followed with a conversation with Chairman Shank about the structure of these ordinances, and after some discussion, he agreed that they could stay the same. Our descriptions, our rationales, they really are the same as they were. Number-wise, if you look at those exhibits, we aren't paying the new operations person even under the grade ten anymore than what we have presented to you, thirty-seven thousand.
That's the buyer, yeah.
Five hundred, oh, that's the buyer position, okay. I think another, to your other point, which you said, what if, what if someone quits today? And that can happen with operations, so we budgeted a slight bit more, but if that person left for whatever reason, we would have to post a position, and so, you know, there again, we're just trying to budget for every scenario, but it isn't a significant amount of money difference. So just for my own peace of mind, the person that is with us now moves into that position, you have the right to offer that person a six percent addition, correct? They equal an employee from step A to step C if they have experience, which obviously this person does. If we hire off the street, what do you do? You still offer that six percent in order to try to bring them into that.
Yeah, depends on their qualification, but I mean, thirty-seven thousand dollars. And that's still low for a senior buyer, you know.
I just, that's why I don't like this rush, because here we sit, looking like you did something wrong, or we did something wrong, when government should, should be a smooth transition, but we all know.
We do everything we can to.
How many, how much money goes through the Department of Procurement, the Office of Procurement annually? Anybody know? Just wondering.
As far as all the contracts and such?
Yeah, what kind of money they handle? I mean, we only have a small office of procurement, and yet pretty substantial, right? Any idea how much?
I know based on the budget and a hundred twenty-five million dollars, subtracting down wages and benefits, a lot of things are contracted out, so if you're in the neighborhood, I know office supplies, this supply, that supply, all the things we have contracted, you're looking at fifty million dollars.
At least, probably.
Yeah, and that's a lot of general fund stuff. Now, you deal with DHS, nine-one-one center, all that stuff, you know, with a five-hundred-fifty-million-dollar budget, five-hundred-seventy-million-dollar budget, there's a lot of money that goes through that department.
Right. I think that's probably pretty accurate, and I guess, you know, with having a special meeting, we didn't really have the opportunity to ask more questions than we probably would have. But, you know, for instance, the ordinance reads, in order to support effective monitoring of spending across the organization, realigning the purchasing function, what exactly will make this more effective since you're downgrading the position at the top, and you're moving it under another department, which I have questions about? Why will it be more effective?
I think the linkage between purchasing and finance is the key, or effective monitoring. While there are some schools of philosophy that say that separate purchasing departments allow them to go out and get the cheapest price, where the other school says that if you've got purchasing and finance in the same umbrella, that the overall budget adherence will be tighter, and that is.
There's a lot of legal issues, correct, procurement, that that group of people, especially the person at the top in procurement, needs to be really knowledgeable and well-versed in legalities and issues, maybe perhaps related to the state, state funding.
Code, which is really state law.
Purchasing code, so again, why would we downgrade a position of that kind of importance?
Well.
Because you don't want to have a director, first of all, a director reporting to a director. It makes no sense to do that, because it's, I mean, unless you want to make it a separate department. We're always trying to save money. Also, the person that's going into the position doesn't have the level of experience as the current director. So that's not to say that they wouldn't end up elevating, but from an organizational structure standpoint. But from an organizational structure standpoint. It didn't make sense.
Well, you know, there's right now, there's a lot of. Loose ends, I'll say.
Yeah.
We don't have a financial advisor accountant slash account. Um, we've had issues with the various finance and personnel reports that we had come across here. Um, I think we probably identified at least a dozen or more different errors, numerous errors that have come through on. Either the agendas or on the exhibits and so forth, and um. You know, there there's a lot of uncertainty here as to. Um, whether the numbers we're getting are right, I I mean, even the latest report on um. Gaming revenue, for example, that we got. I think a lot of the reports we get are sort of the equivalent of looking at your bank account before you balanced your checkbook. And um. So, you know, we we may get one figure, but it doesn't take into account all of the different obligations or commitments that we've made along the way. Um, and I don't want to refer to gaming revenue out of convenience, because that was in the newspaper, and I don't believe that that number was accurate. Right, I think it was off by several million. So when you've got that kind of uncertainty and moving target as far as. Figures or information in our agendas on the exhibits and so forth. You know, I don't know why you'd look to move it now at this point when. We have such upheaval. In in the departments from finance to council itself. And, you know, why not just leave it under the Director of Administration where you have a little more stability?
Uh, you know, we've got a uh. A director that's leaving. Uh, we feel like this is, I guess, I'll remind council that. This was changed in twenty fourteen because of. The marriage of the two officers involved at that time. Uh, so prior to twenty fourteen. Uh, purchasing was under finance, we're simply returning it to that model. Uh, I guess I have to disagree a little bit with your. Uh, assertions that uh somehow the the finance information that you're getting is wholly inaccurate, I don't agree with that.
Well, I didn't say wholly inaccurate, I said we've identified a number of errors which have been acknowledged.
And, you know, I've been around, and in my former role. Certainly corrected all kinds of errors that. Came down in ordinances and it's not uncommon, I don't think, and. I don't believe it's particularly unusual. Uh, what we've what we've experienced with you. Uh, as opposed to what? Previous administrations experienced from councils in previous years.
Well, the difference is that. The difference is that we catch them, if at all, we catch them at the council session itself. So it's just a little unusual, normally they would have been identified beforehand.
Well. Uh, perhaps so, but not always. Uh, and I would say that up to this point, I don't think there have been any errors that have been. Have caused a significant uh expense or or uh. A significant financial problem for the county, I mean, we all want to get it right, certainly. Uh, and I believe. Catching an error after the fact, if that's the case, well, at least it was caught. We're fine with that, but we certainly strive on a daily basis. Uh, to do everything uh as perfectly as as possible. You good?
Well, I mean, I I don't feel reassured that this is more effective monitoring of spending. Um, no. So, uh, yeah, respectfully, I I don't think this answers. Answers the the concern. And there's so much. It's not an empty concern, let's put it that way, it's a concern backed up by. Many examples. And I I don't know why we would. Put some of. Our procedures, I guess, in jeopardy, either from a legal standpoint or from a state funding standpoint. You would want that to be tight as a drum.
Yeah, sure.
Your procurement issues. Well, you know, you you would want that to be very secure. You know, again, the combination of downgrading it and moving the operation under under finance to me is. Kind of shaking.
I mean, I guess our other option would be to have uh gone outside the organization and. Brought in a purchasing professional and. Eighty or ninety thousand dollars and and go on that route, we. Made a decision to promote within, which we're always looking to do. Um. Being that this will be a Bureau of Finance, it's appropriate to have a manager. Uh, the person that. Will be moving over, we believe is wholly. Competence and uh. She certainly has learned a lot from her mentorship with Mr. Crane. And we have total confidence there, and and I would simply add that. In that uh she might report to. Mr. Lipton Walter on a daily basis. I will certainly remain in the picture as I am now, so. Uh, I believe there just as a, if if you will, I believe it's another layer of oversight. And I believe that is part of how you get some additional plus of this change. Anyone else comments? Yes, Mr. Horton?
Yes, uh, one of the last comments, several comments. I do that. I don't see why we're moving it either, as far as monitoring and more accountability. Uh. I think that the more the separation of the two entities lends itself. More to a accountability. More to be more held accountable. And I think that moving it under finance. Uh, real positions itself. Uh, as with a lot of things here. Uh, it's changed here, and I'm not saying the change is bad. The change does need to be understood. Uh, right now, we don't have no understanding. Or any other. We don't have a CBA. Yeah, we finance director who is using a different method of accounting. Uh, that we're accustomed to. It seems like they play three parquet molly with all the money and the resources and and round and round. Round we go, where it stops, nobody knows. Uh, but far as this, the board is forty two. Uh. And I get that you had the conversation with the chairman. But you left here and said that you understood that that should be. Uh, that that you couldn't cram all of that into one ordinance. It looks like you're taking three. Very distinctive. Uh, separate actions in in one ordinance and this procedurally is incorrect. Uh, and that you first was, I guess, is that procurement report to the Director of Finance, that's your first act. And the second act is that the manager position. Uh, replace the director to condition. The senior buyer, whatever. And then the third act. Uh, well, all within one ordinance, managing, which is kind of crazy. Uh, the current senior back position then be reclassified. And and if you want to do that the correct way, and and because you have been around so long and you know this. Uh, would be to have three different ordinances. Uh, to spell that out, and you have three different uh debates on all of it. Uh, and and it may seem like a little new thing, uh, but I've been around a little bit now too. Uh, not certainly not long as Mr. Smith has. Uh, but I've been around to know that this is correct. Uh, and we have some legal and we have legal, a legal. Opinion from our solicitor to the same. Uh, so time and time again, uh, because after a while, it ain't on the administration. And I'm blaming them. And they do. Uh, it's like, it's like kids, they push and push till you tell them to stop. Uh, we do a budget, they come down with everything else, we know we've already did the budget, we spend anyway. And so now this is on us, council as a body. Uh, and so. I'm gonna need a little bit more consideration from my colleagues as to. What uniform you wear. Because this ain't about. If you want to make it clearly partisan, we can do that. But right now, Erie County Council is kind of impotent. Uh, and I submit to you the same, that Erie County government right now is a mess. Uh, and and the the administration has been very, 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 very busy. I'm seeing a lot of productivity. Uh. Because if you were to give me state of the county. I'm not gonna say you haven't done anything, but I'm I'm all ears about what those successes are. And what they look like. Because from where I'm sitting. Uh, we tried to destroy redevelopment, we tried to destroy Egra, we did, we're destroying DEIC. Uh, and now we reorganize and all this stuff, all none of which was budgeted for. And we have a fiduciary responsibility. And so if you're going to be an extension of uh. And I know my colleague isn't sitting here, Mr. Watanarsky, but I don't think he should be exempt either. And if this is going to be partisan, then just say that. Uh, just say that, say, oh, we don't care that this has to be three things or that this was wrong, we have four votes. We don't care that this doesn't seem like, I mean, we have four votes. Uh, but I've seen some of this stuff pass and have to come back and be undone. And I've seen some stuff pass that really couldn't be undone prior to me getting here. So it's not a small thing. Uh, you have three million dollar, a three million dollar unsecured loan that our colleagues, our peers. Gave despite all the lawyers, all the finance people, all the bankers. And it went bankrupt and the taxpayer is still paying for it. So, no, you shouldn't be rushing this stuff down here, and it shouldn't be no special beating for things like this. And if you're gonna hire somebody from within and and you're gonna be involved anyway, and HR is gonna guide it, and the administration is gonna guide the hiring and the interview process anyway. Wherein lies the emergency? This isn't, these aren't structured right parliamentarily or procedurally.
Um, I know we only have one remaining question session, Mr. Jared, um, uh, would it be appropriate to address one hundred forty three at the same time then?
I'd say so, because let's get it all done, that way we can.
Okay, I had questions about the costs involved. Um, we were saving on on beeper pay, and and I am familiar with that because I did have occasion as library director to call. Um, on behalf of either myself or some of my staff for telecommunications issues because the library is open. Um, at you know, at that time of the seventies, we do shifts. And it wasn't unusual to have something happen. And uh, so to to have the uh, have someone. Uh, available for that sort of thing. Now, I don't, you don't have somebody on. Call twenty four seven, I assume?
On call, it's actually a requirement of every position in IT, it's literally in everyone's descriptions and what we.
What happens if it's like eleven P M. and you've got a phone issue, what happens?
We would make the call to that affected employee or whoever's in charge of that system, but we use comp time and flex time. In lieu of the overtime pay, so that person, if they worked two hours of overtime on a Sunday night, that what eleven o'clock call. That person could come in later, leave early that week, or just put in for the time and have comp time.
So they don't get any type of.
We have a very small overtime budget. Um, I worked with with you, your group last year to increase that a little bit. To give us, I mean, we went from five hundred dollars to twenty five hundred dollars for the year. Um, so we we tried very, very hard to minimize those unexpected costs. And use the other benefits that that are in the HR handbook that we can offer the employee in lieu of the overtime pay.
From what I saw, it looks like there must be a considerable amount of reaching out from the various departments. How are you going to absorb all of that without your staff coming at you with pitchforks and, you know?
So the first thing that I would be wondering, if if I took it in my department, is I like to take complete ownership of what's going on. So the first thing that I would do is find out exactly what is resulting in these calls, and then I would determine what mitigation needs to be happening during the operating hours. To eliminate what is happening after hours. Um, I've not been able to take an assessment that way. Um, but I find that usually we can take a different approach once I find out what is causing these emergency calls and a way to prevent those. In IT, we really want to be ahead and not reactive, we want to kind of be more proactive, so I think I would apply that same approach once it was under my purview, I would immediately want to find out. How I can mitigate this. And that only is not only a pro uh benefit to the employee, reducing the the overtime call, but also to the organization itself. With not having a phone system down during your operating hours, so for all those reasons, that's would be my initial approach to it.
Okay, so there's a lot of, you know, uncertainty as to the. I'm gonna say beeper pay. The removal of the beeper pay and how it gets handled after that. What about um? Issues that uh maybe either telecommunications or uh under IT has trouble resolving? We talked about that twenty nine thousand dollars a month, but there's. There's a certain amount that we pay, I'm probably missing something somewhere along the way. There's a certain amount we pay for licensing agreements that is a monthly charge rate, which we would, which wouldn't go away. And then there's a certain amount we pay for. Uh, phone lines, and is that a constant amount, or is that something that changes according to how much we reach out to the company?
Oh, go ahead.
Contractor.
So. There would still be associated costs that would be continued. Um, we have a contracted company in town that actually provides. We we take the service so far, and when it hits. It's usually a union consideration, so we usually in involve the company when it comes to handling the actual hard lines, the actual twisted pair that runs through the wall. That's gonna be asked Advent or a union contractor, some subcontractor to come in and handle that part. So those costs would still be there. Um, until we retire, to Mr. Horton's point, we retire the old analog system and we go to the voiceover internet, which then we will not. Absolutely will not need any sort of third party vendor support.
When does it, when you pass that this year?
So I think our plan is to work on that as a a budget proposal for next year. Um, and it does come with substantial costs.
That would, I'm sorry, that's about two million dollars. Uh, uh, but approximately.
One point five to two million, yes, sir.
So basically, but I mean, for what we pay now, the twenty nine thousand isn't going away, right?
So to just that twenty nine thousand, that that actually came from, what we did was I worked with the operations manager. And we tried to get ahead of the situation, come up with a game plan and prepare ourselves for if we were down. We don't have fax lines and a lot of everyone from the prison to the health department is depending on these. And so what we tried to do is have a game plan and get ahead of it, and we sat down with the local vendor and. In my language, we found the offer to be outrageous, we had. Uh, it was two hundred an hour, and just to give us a bank of twenty prepaid hours to kind of fill in some of these gaps was close to twenty nine thousand.
That was a proposal you received this year?
Yes, ma'am.
So it hasn't been added on, it's just something that you were doing.
Okay, was the result of. With losing a key employee.
Right, right, well, it's, you know, let's talk about se- secure, well, so there isn't any twenty nine thousand, basically, because it was just something that we looked at. Um, recently, um, we've had some issues, we've had cyber attacks, we've had power outages, we had issues. Um, that some of them I knew ahead of time, some of them I didn't know until after the fact, in terms of elections. Where, you know, my constituents were trying to reach the elections office and couldn't reach them. So, and it's my understanding that it was an auto attendant issue. And I guess I'm wondering, you know, if. If telecommunications is going under IT. Um. How can we be assured that there's some sort of um. Reasonable meshing of qualifications and knowledge and understanding, because it is my understanding that they weren't able to deal with it. And it did not get resolved, correct me if I'm wrong.
So operations is still managing the position. Within its majority right now. Um. Maintenance, uh, the operations director and I sat down together, and I actually identified somebody from our internal IT staff. Who actually about twenty years ago worked on the North Tel systems. And that's exactly what we have right now, so he's kind of doing some cross training on that. Um, but as far as an insurance that that wouldn't happen, I I think I would literally need to be granted the opportunity to go in there and really do an assessment for myself to kind of figure out what's going on there.
How did that happen? Couldn't we have called that the company? Audience, is that what she said? Advent?
Apparently we did, and they had an authority of the auto attendance system. And there was not apparently um. Appropriate information left behind. Uh, so that was just a. You know, an offshoot of probably a. Definitive lack of cross training in the previous. Uh, setup and operations, we didn't have a second there who knew everything that. The manager knew, and that was.
So just the, yeah, that was called in?
Certainly a block.
Yes, I believe they troubleshooted that issue with us, yes.
We need to be sustainable. We don't wanna be vendor-dependent to the degree that we get cripples us. And, and, you know, that's why we're part of the reason why we're bringing it under IT, but also because technology is making it almost impossible. We can't keep the old technology, the old phone system, so. But it's all about operational continuity and there's a lot. We're, we fall short in a lot of areas for that reason. We're trying to stay ahead of the game. We're trying to select people. We try to promote from within. There's a lot of balls in the air to run this operation. Very difficult. So thanks for your help and, and listening because it's good that you're learning more, because I'm learning more as I hear this too then. It's, it frustrates me because we are understaffed in some areas and we were vendors dependent and we just have to get away from that. We have to be sustainable.
It seems like some of the moves are creating some of the problems though, or some of the opposables are certainly creating some of the problem. And that, that's concerning. I have a little concern. And, um, I think there's just so much that we, we don't know. Uh, I'll see to anyone else who would like to.
Anybody else? All right, that concludes the comment and questions from Congress. This takes us number five, old business. Thank you, please.
Ordinance number forty-two of twenty-twenty-three, the twelve twenty-twenty-three general fund budget supplemental appropriation of three thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars for procurement department reorganization and senior buyer position job reclassification.
Point of order.
Yes.
Um, again, uh, this ordinance is structurally incorrect in that it asks for three actions in one thing. And, and in that the administration can do the very same thing uh, by individualizing each of those. And I think it's a dangerous practice and a policy, uh, that we're embarking upon however minor it may appear to be.
Okay, what were, uh, noted?
Um, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to move to table ordinance number forty-two. Until these concerns can be addressed.
I have a motion. I need a second.
A second.
First and a second for a table. Roll call vote please on the table.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
Mrs. Sharman.
No.
Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Watanarsky.
No.
Mr. Bale.
No.
And Chairman Shank.
No. With the table filled, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we read the ordinance. Um, I'm gonna need a second for it to go forward. Second, I have the first and the second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, are repeated, uh, repeatedly time and time again. We have these procedural things and we have a solicitor. In fact, we have two uh, who have told us the error of our ways. Yet we, as I earlier stated, uh, at some point, it's not on the administration's, this body. Uh, yet we move, we move, uh, erroneously forward with it, uh, setting this strange and dangerous precedence. Uh, this ordinance, uh, in, in all that it does, could have accomplished what it was and by the administration's unwillingness to comply with a simple request that sets us up in adversarial, uh, row almost constantly. Uh, and again, to my previous confidence, uh, just because you have four votes, don't make it right. And so I'll go out on a limb too, cuz I'm on a truth tour and honesty tour. So Mr. Watanarsky, because we so serious about this stuff right now, ain't no gray areas. Because clearly it's going by party, it's going partisan shit. Maybe he should consider changing his party to Republican, cuz this is foolishness. Uh, I, that's my comments.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
I know in the past we have had some ordinances that were designed like this and they were approved by the same solicitor and passed. So I don't see a problem with this. If they are all reorganized, it'll be two months down the road until these jobs can be posted. And people will not be able to get in them and room from, um, the people that commended them now and will be starting all over. And I don't feel that the votes are partisan. It, I just believe that this is the right thing to do, like, um. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I know a lot of people probably feel that I'm here just to ask your chance. Um, but even though I was one of the last ones brought in to the restructuring that you proposed, uh, special meeting, it was pretty clear that others had, had, had meetings prior to that. Um, I have publicly recognized what I thought to be a very thoughtful approach to restructuring these departments with an eye to the costs that were going to be forthcoming. Including the cost of migrating to my responsibility and so on. And, and I appreciated that. Um, but it, it's, it, it's like an onion that just keeps unraveling. The closer we look at it, the more the facade just seems to slip and change. And the exhibits, again, you know, the numbers that get put before us. It's always a moving target. The forecast for either spending or savings is never quite on the money. And really until it is, I, you know, I don't see how we can do this going forward. There are too many things that don't check out, don't add up. And I, I think council is getting ahead of itself by passing anything like this. And, and even with that being said, again, I have to restate, I have a real issue with procurement going under finance. Um, it was a little bit different because I believe the manager of procurement at that time was also over maintenance and, and had other duties. So it was a much larger position. So it's, it's not really a fair comparison, I, I don't think. And I think that, I think at this stage of the game, with all of the, um, clearly identified problems that we've seen coming through and errors um, in, in the numbers that are being reported and so forth, that procurement position needs to be exact. It can't be compromised in any way whatsoever. Keys have to be crossed, eyes have to be dotted. We have to be assured that it's going to not be glossed over, I guess, to make sure that it's going through the same thoughtful and rigorous process for all of the business that this office does. So in light of that, you know, I, I find, I have a problem with it also moving under finance in addition to what's happening in the exhibits before us today, which are clearly half-baked. So I will be voting against it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just to add my two cents, I guess, I think people sitting in in this room and people around this courthouse, the people that work for county government, they know how I feel. When something comes down to improve their way of life with more money or benefits, I'm in their corner one hundred percent. I've met with Doug and Ann on a number of occasions when they thought there was gonna be pushback. And I spoke positive to them. My first two months here, I was so aggravated by what those people in the election office paid. I wanted to bring forward a resolution. Everybody told me, calm down, calm down, we're negotiating contracts. Here we are tonight. I have nothing where we talked about adding the six percent or anything like that because if we go outside, we gotta find somebody good. But to use the excuse that we have to do it now because it's an emergency, we can't wait a month, six weeks. Every county government can't wait. We don't have, we're gonna stop governing because we're missing one or two employees. If that's the case, then we better start from the top and improve everything. I'll be voting no for this. Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sorry, Jim. I, I, I humbly apologize, sir.
No problem. Uh, I know I'm that lost child out here, but, uh, um, just to put my comments in also, uh, the ex- explanation that we did get from the administration, I do believe Mr. Smith was was adequate. Um, we've been not filling budgeted positions for budget after budget after budget. I mean, not only this administration this last year, but prior administrations. It doesn't make sense to budget these positions if we can't fill them, whether it be for what the pay grade is or what have you, but if we have to consolidate to save money, I feel it's the right thing to do. It's about time we got a little proactive on this instead of just saying waiting for somebody to take these positions that really aren't worth taking when the money isn't there. But, uh, I will be voting yes on this to get this county moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Sorry for skipping over you.
Mr. Chair, one, excuse me, one point?
Please make it quick.
Um, I, I just wanted to respond. Uh, the, the email, um, talked about cost savings and, um, consolidations and, and in fact, it's, uh, mostly new positions. And there is no cost savings. That twenty-nine thousand dollars is non-existent. Twenty-nine thousand dollars was a proposal that never, never made it to the budget this year. There is no savings. And, um, uh, just so there is an understanding there, the explanation didn't hold water. Thank you.
Okay. Voca, voc please.
Who made the motion? Though I have Sharman as a second, but who had made the motion?
I, I didn't think.
I think you made a move.
Oh, yeah. Who made a motion? You, you, I heard you second. Who made the motion?
Spome.
Okay, so Bale moved, okay. The Bale Sharman on ordinance number forty-two, the second reading. Mrs. Rennie.
No.
Mrs. Sharman.
Yes.
Mr. Scatella.
No.
Mr. Watanarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Bale.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
No.
And Chairman Shank.
Yes. Okay, it's just a second reading. I only.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna make sure we're all set on the amount for this because this was amended. We discussed it with HR and caucus previously. And then we, you know, keep it at, I know Mr. Smith's saying it's the same, you know, the same number is in, in true in fact. So is it the sixty-one thousand three thirty that HR had us amended caucus? Or is it the sixty-two eight oh nine? Just so we're all on the same page. I have my, my previous notes from the previous caucus, which we, we did change those.
Yeah, we're on this.
I just wanna make sure I have the right number I'm reading before we proceed.
Thank you.
Well, it was read at the higher number, it would be amended to a different number.
Correct. And, and that was, that was the plan. We were going to amend in the meeting, but unfortunately it did not, uh, the ordinance did not move forward. But I know that was the discussion we had, um, with Amanda. You were scrambling to, uh, calculate numbers to make sure we had it correctly. So I actually ran in the office and created a new, uh, face sheet for that reason. So I wanna make sure I'm reading the proper face.
I, I did have that when we were going to run that as well, that she was trying to check with Jen and I think Jen heard.
Jen's on the line. I don't know if she can hear us, but we did check with her before the meeting. Paul, do you know which?
Sixty-two, seven, thirty-three.
Okay.
A whole different number though. So we have sixty-two, seven, thirty-three, you said?
That's.
So sixty-two, eight oh nine is on one ordinance and then the other one is sixty-one, three thirty. So which one are we at here? So I'll make sure again, we're doing this properly.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So the sixty-one is the number that Amanda and Jennifer.
Just, just, I'm not sure if Amanda worked with Jennifer, but this is the one that we worked in, in caucus. And then, uh, as we entered the chambers, Amanda came up to me and said it's sixty-one, three thirty. So I just wanna make sure we're set as to which number is correct.
I think that's the number.
The, the sixty-one, three thirty.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna need to then, you know, okay, move to amend ordinance number forty-three to sixty-one, three thirty.
See, that's sixty-one, three thirty. Mary had asked what the annual salary for those jobs could be. So.
Yeah, um, I think that was brought up apart from any comments. I mean, last meeting, right?
It was, it was separate.
Yeah, you asked that question for a column on the spreadsheet showing what the annual salaries would be.
Uh, and that was completely separate from what Amanda was, was giving.
Mr. Chair, could we just move to amend? Uh, once it finds the corrected number, it's already been voted on.
I agree.
This has not been voted on. This is ordinance number forty-three. Yeah, this is forty-three before we move forward.
That's okay. What number, what number do you guys need?
I have to guess on the agenda, I mean, won't pay any more out than what the individuals are entitled to.
The number in the, that a man.
Wages and fringes. Yes. That's just the salary for next.
That's what's on, the ordinance you're asking about was the salary or not?
Yeah, the ordinance number forty-three for the reorganization of information technology and operations.
What's the current number?
The current number that, that Amanda had given me was sixty-one thousand, three thirty eighteen. And then originally on that, this agenda, and we heard from you, was sixty-two thousand, eight oh nine. So we just wanna make sure which is the correct number.
The more recent number, the sixty-one.
It's just salary and it doesn't count fringes. I think the number should remain.
Remain as is, okay.
Sixty-two, eight oh nine. That's with the, that's the base and the frame.
I just wanna make sure.
All right.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to table ordinance number forty-three.
Starting.
I have the first and second for tabling ordinance number forty-three.
Mrs. Sharman.
No.
Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Watanarsky.
No.
Mr. Bale.
No.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
And Chairman Shank.
No. And the table failed, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Chair. Uh, I move that we move into executive session.
All right, I have executive session. Could you guys please step out? Is there a vote, Mr. Chairman? Well, we do actually technically have a first and a second out on the floor. But she can call for an executive session.
We don't have, we only were having the tabling.
No, sorry.
Yeah, we did not move to a vote and we moved to a table. The table failed and she called for executive session.
So we can go into executive session. AJ, I gotta do this. AJ, get out. All right. Remember we're us and the crew where we were at.
They're ready. Now the second reading of ordinance number forty-three of twenty-twenty-three, the thirteenth twenty-twenty-three general fund budget supplemental appropriation of sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars for the reorganization of information technology and operations.
Okay, and we had a motion for a table and it failed, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so do I, do I need a first and a second?
Well, we need an amendment to amend them.
We're not amending. We're sticking with that amount for Mr. Smith.
After, after they figured out their numbers, they were gonna understand.
Is that fair, right?
They got a first?
Second.
I have a second discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, once again, we are in a situation that is totally of the administration's making. And this is one of those situations where the more you examine it, the more the thought slips and thinner it appears. I don't think that this should have come to council with a special meeting. I think there are too many questions. Even the number that you gave us was just kind of bucked out of the air. The information that we have really isn't reliable. Reasons we're coming here to the meeting. Um, there are no savings. I'm going to be voting no on this.
In, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, anybody else? Being none, vocal vote please.
Mr. Scatella.
No.
Mr. Watanarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Bale.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
No.
Mrs. Rennie.
No.
Mrs. Sharman.
Yes.
And Chairman Shank.
Yes. The last page. Quick reminder, the next finance meeting is June eighth, the next county council meeting is June thirteenth. I'll set the motion to go.
Moved. Moved.
That, that.
I don't play, I don't play logic yet. I just.